Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for this day and ask that you will help us to yield to your guidance, that you may be glorified in our deeds and in our actions for the betterment of this community. These blessings and others we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Wish to welcome you to this meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman as we approach closing out this fiscal year. Ms. Goldman, roll call to the term of Quorma.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. I'd like to recognize we have police. Do you remember here, Mr. Isaac Gray? Thank you for joining. It's good to see you. I have just a few announcements that I would like to make and let you know that we have been working very hard on behalf of the citizens of Bastrop. We have some special days, historic days, coming up. Juneteenth, that will be Celebration Saturday in Raff George Park and Dotson Park. That has become a tradition down through the years here. We have the Fourth of July that's coming up, and that's another historic day that we celebrate, and I don't believe we will see you again. Well, we will see you for the 28th. We have another meeting scheduled. But our regular meeting won't be until after the Fourth of July holidays. Also, we have several reunions that are taking place, and we have a lot of guests that will be in town, and we certainly want to make our guests feel welcome, some are returning home to visit for these reunions, and it's always an event that we look forward to. Mr. Mulkey, our LMA representative, thank you so much for joining us. If you would, I'm going to give you an opportunity. We have a lengthy agenda. Appreciate your visits always, so if you'll come and give us a little update.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I won't take but a moment because I know you have a long agenda tonight, but I just wanted to come and make a courtesy visit with you and express our appreciation for Bastrop's support of the LMA and risk management through the years. And if there's anything we can do to serve you, just let us know, and we'll be glad to do that, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I want to talk to you a little bit about the budget. We've been working on that, looking at different scenarios, and I want you to know that I will always be honest with you. We're not out of trouble yet in terms of money and revenue, and we have to be very prudent in the decisions that we make and how we spend the money. In fact, we've looked a lot with police and fire, which, those are two items that are very expensive to the city, but they're very necessary. And I guess if you had to summarize it, we hope we never have to call the police except for a positive reason or the fire department. But just in case we have to call them for other reasons, we have to have those two services available to us. To get both departments at optimum level, just at a minimum optimum level with both chiefs, would cost the city an additional $300,000 or a little better. So we are still wrestling with finding another alternative source of revenue. That is our obligation, that we continue to look for how to sustain city services. Sometimes it becomes quite easy as a citizen to say, "I would do this," or "I would do that," or come up with scenarios and ideas, but at the end of the day, the obligation rests on the back of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman. We live by an oath to look out for the citizens, and I think it would be a travesty if we fail to pursue alternatives to help sustain services to the city. We are continuing to deal with the increasing cost of retirement expenditures. Ms. Goldman, do you have a number for that yet? I know you've been running some numbers.
I do. It's in their budget report, but I didn't bring mine, but it's gone up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We are still dealing with that. We dealt with it last year. I've talked about it repeatedly, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but we have to be cognizant of what we are dealing with. We have already, and I can always appreciate the citizen that was here a few months ago that said, "You have to tighten your belts." We did tighten our belts. We tightened our belts to the tune of over a million dollars that we have cut out of this budget. And I spoke with the IP executives this week. They are continuing the dismantling process, and they have an anticipated date that's still in alignment with what they told me several months ago. So we're looking at a continuous decrease in our tax base. So I ask that you support the city and support the city's efforts. When you really stop and look at everything, we have done extraordinarily well under some very difficult times, but we are going to continue to do our very best. We look for alternate sources of grants, of course. Grants come with stipulations, and you have to use the money for what it is specified for. You can't just take a meth grant, and if you want to put somebody on patrol in a burglary situation, then you have violated the requirements of that grant. But we do, speaking of meth grant, Chief Black, you want to come and talk a little bit about, we have some money left with that. We're working to augment what we have and stretch it as far as we can, and we're looking at creative ways to make things work a little better under these most difficult times. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but since I brought up meth grant.
Yes, we have a meth grant. We're still using it. It's to support not only the Bastrop Police Department, but also the Sheriff's Office in that we have a drug task force together. So we share some of that money as far as the expenses of salaries and, of course, the equipment and training. This grant is mostly equipment and training built into the grant, and we're in the process of purchasing what we need for that and sending officers to the schools. Also built into the grant is salaries that we can, you know, move an officer into the task force and pay his salary or pay a salary when we hire someone to replace him. And I think that's what we're trying to do, to make the most of this meth grant right now to benefit the department and the city.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. We're also looking at applying for a fire department grant. Chief Montgomery, you're working in the working stage of that, and we have had some dialogue. We've been over to the fire station, looking at our needs. Do you want to talk a little bit about your application process?
Yeah, the grant that we are looking at is something to help spruce up the stations, particularly on the outside. We have some parking lots that have deteriorated to the point that, you know, they have potholes and stuff in them, and it's mainly cosmetic. We have one old station still that has a flat roof. We changed the roof on another one, but Old Station Two, we call it. I think it was built in 1959, but anyway, it still has a flat roof, and we'd like to try to see if we could find some funding that would allow us to put a pitch roof on it.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Montgomery. We also applied for a grant through Delta Regional Authority. That was a very interesting saga for me. The staff members have laughed about it, and I may as well tell it publicly, but we debated back and forth whether we should apply or whether what we needed fit the criteria, so at the last minute, I was urged, "Go ahead and apply." So they had a form online that you fill in, and I was typing as I was thinking, putting all the information in, felt very good about it. I must have spent five hours at the computer back and forth, and when I finished, I called Ms. Goldman. She was doing part of the grant. I said, "Ms. Goldman, I finished my part. I've done the narrative. I've done the goals, the objectives, the justification." She said, "I'll be there in a minute, Mayor." And of course, as any curious person, you're sitting there and you're thinking, "There's something else I ought to do." And I saw a button that said, "Save draft." And I hit that button, the whole screen went black. And I said, "I don't believe this has happened. Surely it went somewhere." So I started clicking buttons, and nothing happened. Finally, I went to something else, and it came back up, and I just went back into the user password. Grant was gone, completely gone. This was on a Thursday evening, and the deadline date was Friday. I got up from that computer, walked out in the hall, didn't know whether to cry, so I went to Ms. Goldman's office, and I did what I do best when I'm under stress. I went to the refrigerator and got two chicken wings that I had left over from lunch, put them in the microwave oven, and heated them, and saturated them with hot sauce, and enjoyed it to no end. Amazing, the consolation you can get in the thought process of what you need to do under circumstances like that. So, of course, Ms. Goldman being the person that she is, she's the anchor that helps us to stay grounded. For some reason, we know not to go off in front of her, for some reason. But I went home that evening, and I promise you, and I don't say this to brag, but because I have a determination, when something needs to be done, at least you try. I stayed up all night, and I typed that grant again, creating the information as I went along, and I hit the send button from the comfort of my own home, in my own computer, at six o'clock the next morning. But guess what? We got that grant in, and I am going to follow that grant. If they don't honor that grant, I'll eat the whole chicken this time instead of two chicken wings. But we all work to that end when there's something that we know has to be done and somebody has to assume the responsibility for doing it, and we are truly dedicated to you. Trusting that we will get that grant, we are going to deliver some services to the community and augment what we already have, an initiative that the chiefs and I have talked about, and that's to give a greater push to the west end of town. We look at all the corridors coming into the city of Bastrop. The 425 has been improved through the state and federal monies that have come through. Then we look at the Walmart entrance, and that entrance looks extremely well. We look at 139 coming in, which that's residential on that end, but then the west end of town needs more of our attention, and we appreciate what Keep More House Beautiful has done, but we are going to have to do more to make that area attractive for businesses and industries to come in. So I have tasked both chiefs. I've reached out to the superintendent, and he will be with us next month. He was planning to be here this month, but due to scheduling problems, he's going to come for our July meeting along with him. Going to extend the invitation to Dr. Bruno. But we are going to work with other agencies. I've spoken with Representative Katrina Jackson. She's willing to work with us on this particular push for the development on the west end of town. Also, I have submitted letters, met with Senator Landrieu, Representative Rodney Alexander, on the Martin Luther King sewer problem. We recognize that continues to be a problem. That system is quite old. It's a system that we inherited, and through no fault of our own, we're doing the best that we can, but we recognize that the quality of life in that area, when that system is malfunctioning, it causes a problem in terms of the simple things that people like to enjoy doing, like sitting out in the back, barbecuing. If you would, Joe, come and just briefly talk about, there's another date scheduled for them to come and do a demonstration on the new technology that would help minimize that smell that is produced when that system is malfunctioning.
Yes, it's early September. I told you.
September 10.
September 10. They're going to come back to town and do another example running of the equipment so that everyone can come and see it this time, that missed out on it the first time. And if we can work out the grant and get everything in place like we want, it's going to make like night and day difference at the plant. I mean, the biggest source of the odors there is the two big tanks on top of the hill and the two ones next to it, and they'll basically become obsolete by putting in this new equipment. So it's going to make a big, big difference, and it should help.
I have a question. How long will this procedure take?
Basically, once the, you know, the money's approved and the equipment's ordered, it could be installed really quickly. I mean, it wouldn't take long at all, several months probably, but, you know, however long it takes for the paperwork and the equipment, because I was told, I think, four months delivery on the equipment from the day it's ordered. So it wouldn't really be that bad to get it going. So it's just a matter of time and paperwork and getting approvals on everything.
Thank you.
I have asked Senator Landrieu, Representative Rodney Alexander, David Vitter, to help us with secure funding. It would cost about a million dollars to acquire two units that would accommodate that facility, as I appreciate about two-thirds of our sewer is filtered through that particular area. The application that we put in in 2011, we have not heard from it yet. It takes time to hear from that. To move that system would be at a minimum $14 million, but we did submit application to the Water Resource Act. But while we wait, and having learned about new technology as we wait, I felt it was an obligation to continue to pursue alternatives to help with that particular area of town. I believe that concludes my announcements. Do you have any announcements, council members?
No.
Thank you so much. One other thing, the Gateway Enhancement Project, bids will be let out in October, this fall, and that's the Gateway Project that will be at every entrance of the city, coming into the city of Bastrop. Thank you for your attention and respect to those announcements. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Item number five, at this time, I will entertain the motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting, May 10, 2012.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution 12-1444, bills and claims for the month of May 2012. Mr. Locke?
May I move for the acceptance of the committee report, Resolution 12-1444, bills and claims for the month of May 2012?
Properly moved by Mr. Locke?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Resolution 12-1448, resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to engage the services of Viola Water, such terms and conditions provided for, in a written addendum of the contract, and to authorize such other necessary acts that are necessary and prudent with respect thereto. Mr. Fontenot. And Mr. Lawrence, I believe I need you to be prepared to make some comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, from what I understand, this is just an extension to our existing contract so that we can continue to move forward towards our new contract. And we need to, because at the end of the month, our contract is up, and we need to get a extension, and I've talked to my corporate folks, and they're all, you know, they're on board for an extension of, you know, 60 to 90 days or whatever's needed to go ahead and get this accomplished, so.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
Mayor, what Mr. Fontenot just said is consistent with my understanding, and it is to allow the current contract terms to remain in effect on an interim basis until such time that you and the council are in a position to make a decision about a long-term, I guess, or a permanent contract on this issue.
Okay. Thank you both gentlemen. Do you have any questions for clarity that you need answered? At this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 12-1448.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Nathan.
Second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, appoint a city auditor. It is my pleasure, Cindy is not here.
No, ma'am. She had another engagement.
It is my pleasure to reappoint and make a recommendation to you as council members, Cindy Haynes as our auditor. She has done a tremendous job. She's quite familiar with our books and our numbers. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, reappointment of city attorneys. It is my pleasure to reappoint and make a recommendation to you as council members, Mr. Douglas Lawrence and Mr. John Bentley as city attorneys. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
And duly second by Mr. Nathan and Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, it is my pleasure to... Something, is it me?
Someone in and out.
Did I do that? Don't make me go to the refrigerator. We're not on TV, and I'm a little more relaxed. We even, we are? Oh, my goodness. My husband is going to talk about me so bad. It is my pleasure to make a recommendation to you as council members to reappoint Ms. Sandra Goldman as our city clerk.
I'd like to make that motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong.
I second that motion.
And second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item number 11, it is my pleasure to reappoint and make this recommendation to the council, Assistant Clerk, City Clerk, Amanda Hall. I'll entertain a motion.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Ms. Goldman, appoint two commissioners to the Morehouse Sales Tax Commission. We have... You want to talk about that a little bit?
Have two. The sales tax, D Street collects all the sales tax within the parish. It's broken up between us, the school board, the sheriff department, the police juror, and the villages of Bonita, Oak Ridge, and Maruge. The school board has two. We have two representatives. The sheriff department has one, the police juror has one, and the little villages of Bonita, Collingson, and Maruge share one-third vote each, and that's how it's broken down. Currently, it's myself and Amanda Hall, the Assistant City Clerk, is on the board now.
It is my pleasure to reappoint Ms. Goldman and Amanda Hall to these positions respectively as they have a history of the workings and access to the information in terms of our finances. I make this recommendation to you as council members.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, discussion action on choosing the official journal of the city of Bastrop. Ms. Goldman, you want to talk about that from a legal standpoint and why we have to do this?
The legislative audit requires each city and village or town to have an official journal, and normally, it's the one that you reside closest to. Has to be one that covers your Morehouse Parish. In our case, it would have the wider coverage, so everything that's legally has to be posted. We have to send it to them, like our minutes, our ordinances, different things like that. We're required to let the legislative auditor know this time of the year who we selected, and it's time to do that now.
We have a representative here from the Bastrop Daily Enterprise, Mr. Wes Hiblin. Thank you for your coverage. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So who?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, Resolution 12-1445, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lewis and Ellis and Corporation to provide actuary service for the Gadsby 45 compliance. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this here is an audit compliance several years ago, I want to say about three years ago. They added this as an audit. It's just an accountant or an actuary, actuaries who it is, that does it, and it has to do with our health insurance. It's just numbers of putting stuff back on paper for audit. Last year was our first year to really be in compliance with it. This company does it, and they did a real good job. We didn't have any findings on it, so everything looked good. Our auditor was really pleased with their work, so every year, we have to have just the interest of what we did every year done. I contacted them, and I think they gave us a pretty reasonable price. It's not as high as last year. That's because they already have our employees and the data and all that already. It's just bringing the current for the last year. So we would like for you to consider approving this ordinance where we can begin on our audit after July.
Having heard that presentation from Ms. Goldman, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Nathan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, Resolution...
Mayor.
Yes, did I skip something? Item 14, thank you. Item number 14, Resolution 12-1445, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract. No?
You're on 15.
15.
I thought I had read that before. Resolution 12-1446, a resolution authorizing support for a grant through the Delta Regional Authority to fund the purchase of two police cars. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is the grant that we worked so hard on. We want to make the official request. We sent it in early, but we want to go ahead and make the official request so that way we can finish up the procedures on it. We really need these police cars, so we're hoping that we can get them.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 12-1446.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, Resolution 12-1447, a resolution making application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for the approval of incurring of debt and issuance by the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana, of not to exceed $1,500,000. Revenue anticipation note, Series 2012, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is the annual thing that we've done. I think this is our 13th year. We have to go... We have to go and borrow this money. Our main source of revenue is seasonal, and we have a period that's usually between August and November, that our revenue doesn't come in quite as frequently and as much as the rest of the year. So, we do a bond, and it has to be voted on and approved by bond, by the bond commission, and it's based upon our anticipated revenue of the general fund only, that's all they base it on. And it's proof that we will pay it, and we always have paid it, as soon as we start collecting taxes, we pay it as soon as we can. We don't wait around, we pay it early to save as much interest as we can. So, this is just one step that we have to do to do a resolution. We'll later come back in a few months and do ordinance, but this is the first beginning step to make application to the bond commission, and it'll go off next week.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. As you have heard, this is one step in a procedure, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number 17, ordinance 12-4208, an ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop to amend section 4-16 and 4-19 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, relative to the hours that the sale of alcohol beverages is authorized. Mr. McKee, Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor, I think this is the second read of this ordinance.
Yes, sir.
I know it's been introduced before, and in light of one of the requests that was communicated to me earlier, there is an addition to the ordinance language that I prepared and that I'm prepared to bring forward tonight for the council to consider. And it is a sentence that supplements what's in the existing ordinance draft, it reads as follows. "In addition, all places of business where alcoholic beverages are sold and authorized to be consumed on the premises, except as otherwise provided in the Code of Ordinances, shall remain closed between the hours of 12 noon and 6 o'clock a.m. on Monday." That sentence in isolation, when it's added to the other portion of the ordinance, and when it's added to all the other provisions of the Code of Ordinances that govern alcohol sales, means this. For consumption on the premises, which would be a bar, you will not be able to do that on Sunday, at any, during any portion of the day. And so, it's my understanding and appreciation that that is something that this council wanted to consider, and therefore, the net effect of the legislation would be, package sales of alcohol could occur on Sunday, but there cannot be consumption on premises at a bar on Sunday. I'm prepared now to bring forward either version of the ordinance that you want to consider.
Okay. Mr. McKee, is there anything that, point of interest that needs to be added to what Mr. Lawrence has just described here?
No ma'am, I think he pretty much covered everything.
Okay. Council members, is there any dialogue that needs to be addressed?
No, Mr. Lawrence, you did stated that there will be no, in other words, you cannot consume it on the premises, right? That's the only change.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so, the original ordinance, when you add the sentence that I just read to it, will have the net effect of allowing package sales on Sunday.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, at this time, I will entertain a motion on ordinance 12-... Okay, 4208. I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong.
Aha, second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Locke.
No.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mr. Nation.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mayor, the count is two to three.
Two to three. This motion carries by a majority vote of three to two. May the record reflect the action on this ordinance. Thank you very much. Item number 18, ordinance 12-4209, an ordinance of the mayor and the board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to amend and restate pertinent sections of the regulatory ordinances forming the zoning development code of the city of Bastrop to clarify the definition of transient accommodations and accessory structures, and to repeal all other sections of the Code of Ordinances that are inconsistent therewith and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor, this came to the city as a, I'm gonna call it a legislative package that the Historic District Commission, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Commission requested that we adopt, because it was something that they adopted, and it involves very technical terms that deal with what's known as an accessory structure, and also deals with what's known as transient accommodations. And so, adoption of this would be consistent with the recommendation that the city's zoning and planning commission has made, and it will have the effect of carrying the force of our Code of Ordinances.
Okay, you have heard the presentation by Mr. Lawrence. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number 19, ordinance 12-4210, an ordinance of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to amend and restate section 13-29 of the regulatory ordinance of the city of Bastrop regarding the licensure of peddlers to repeal all other sections of the Code of Ordinances that are inconsistent therewith and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor, this is a request that we received primarily to address the problem of peddlers who are itinerant, who come to town, who sell items but don't sell, don't collect sales taxes, and don't remit those sales taxes to the local governmental entities here. That would include the city and all other entities that enjoy those sales and use tax proceeds. And so, this is intended to place a financial requirement upon peddlers, for them to be licensed, for them to put up money, or a bond essentially, and for them to forfeit that bond in the event that they come here and attempt to sell but not remit the sales taxes that they should be collecting to the local entities that are here. So again, this was in response to a recommendation that we received in light of the problems expressed that peddlers were not collecting taxes, and in a sense, undercutting, I guess, local businesses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Council members, do you have any questions? At this time, I will entertain a motion on ordinance 12-4210.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Nation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed, motion carries. See, Mr. McKee left, we're gonna have to expand the agenda also on Ms. Goldman.
Yes, ma'am.
For liquor license. At this time, I will entertain a motion to expand the agenda in regards to issuing of a liquor license.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, Chief Black. Chief Montgomery, would you see if Mr. McKee left?
Good evening. I'd like to apologize, I got this liquor license notification late evening, and I'm not real, I think the license, I would recommend that the license be issued pending the course of state license, but the address listed on the letter may not be the correct address. The license is for Uncle G's Lounge.
It's on that page.
And the address listed here is 1930 North Washington, and I'm not, I don't think that's the correct address.
What about the name of the business?
Uncle G's Lounge.
Uncle G.
It, I think it's the business there, Williams and West Madison.
Yes, that's correct.
And that may be 1930, West Madison may be the address. I just happened to notice it just a while ago when I was looking at it. But I think they may have applied, properly applied and all, I think it's a typo in the letter that was typed up.
Okay. Well, that, I don't think that poses any problem, does it, Mr. Lawrence?
It doesn't, if it's a typo and not substantive, something really substantive, it doesn't pose a problem.
Okay. Okay, council members. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this request. Who's the, oh, we don't know whose district it is with the mistaken address, so it's up for fair game.
I think it's on North Wa, I mean, on West Madison.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Aha, second, mayor.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much. I've got both chiefs to speak a little bit in the very early stage of the meeting. Mr. McKee, let's get you to talk a little bit about Public Works, and we have, we have really leaned on Public Works a lot, they do a lot of work, and I ask that you be sensitive to the employees that work in the Public Works Department, particularly those who work in the heat of the day, the elements, the rain, and let's express our appreciation to them, they do work extremely hard in having to make cuts. That was one of the first places we went to, so they are always the one that's the moving target. So, Mr. McKee, if you would, talk a little bit about the activities coming up for this weekend with the Juneteenth celebrations, our preparations for our visitors that's coming in, and some other things that we've been doing in Public Works.
Okay, mayor. We've been, for the past week and a half, we've been, along with our regular duties, with ball fields, moon rideaways, we've been busy preparing both Dotson Park and Ralph George Park for the Juneteenth Day celebration. I think if you, if the council members have a chance to go through both parks, I think you'll see some pretty good cosmetic improvements to both parks. We also have, on the 23rd, Ruben Randall will be in Dotson Park, it'll be a day in the park for, they will host an event for the kids and adults, anyone that wants to come to Dotson Park. We also have several rentals at the municipal center, both for family reunions and school reunions. We invite those of you that went to Union High School to come out and celebrate with Morehouse, as we always do. And we're trying to keep all the grass cut, we, so we ask the citizens to bear with us because we're still cutting ditches, and we haven't made it all the way around town yet. So, if you would bear with us, and the mayor has implicated that we have taken some cuts, and most recently, and I won't say most recent, but we are probably 35% less in our workforce than we were four years ago.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. And please express our sentiments to the employees, that we appreciate the hard work they do all the time, but especially in the extreme heat that we are going to endure.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you for all the preparations for the activities that are coming up. We are extremely proud of Ruben Randall. I've been trying to get on Ruben's schedule, so I've been calling his daddy, and they told me his daddy was in New York today, so, but we will get Ruben to come as soon as his schedule permits, and we can really give him a formal appreciation and give him a good send-off. He is one of our own very good student, student at LSU, and proud that he was selected to play ball. Ms. King, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
As I was aware, the agenda looked pretty lengthy, but we've been through that pretty quickly. But I would like to say that we did have some representatives from Louisiana Economic Development come last week, and this was kind of a very short notice, that they have a program where they're looking at potential industrial sites. And I was able to set up a meeting, we met at the existing industrial park on Calder, it was pretty hot that day, we couldn't, didn't really have any place to lay out maps. We went over to the airport, and that, Mr. Elkins was able to come in, he had the airport plans, but we did get to talk with him, and did get to lay out our vision to take NAF, and this is something the police jury and the city have been working on for some time to get NAF put into the state highway system, and how this makes a natural loop through that area up Marlette. Then we proceeded up Marlette, we looked at a couple of pieces outside of the city limits, and that is one advantage that I have, that, you know, I can work all over the parish, and we did look at a site before Walmart and a site out past Walmart. And so, I think it's just, it's important for us to be represented when these gentlemen come, and that's something that I can provide in my job, that, because that is what I focus on, so. I hope that I don't have any results back or comments back, but they did make some interesting suggestions and some things that I'll be working on in the future. So, we're just continuing, we're moving forward with the Ditto Building, I'm not sure if Ms. Goldman's received any bids, I would think that we might possibly not receive any bids, but that this is just a process that we go through, and that hopefully, it'll put us in a better position to sell the Ditto Building at some time. And we're just, just continue to move forward, and hopefully, we might get some inquiries on this with people that have ideas. I'm excited to kind of move forward with that, and we'll just keep working at it. I appreciate everything that the city does, I know, I too noticed, I was out at the industrial park today, and I complimented Mr. McKee on the great job of how well everything looked, they cleaned up some of the flower beds in the spec building at the corner of Industrial Drive, and we have had a prospect for that building, and I'm gonna be following up on that prospect, and hope we can get something solidified on that. But we're still having inquiries, and still have people interested in the area, and we just continue to work those prospects.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. King. We, the city hosted a small business seminar yesterday. I signed a partnership agreement with Louisiana Tech, and they will be working with the city of Bastrop more in the future on projects to help our community. I recall Senator Landry saying that one of the most underused services in our community is our university, that's in our, within our locale, so we wanna tap into that resource a little more. Was very proud of that seminar, Ms. King was in attendance, and we had about 12 people present, Mr. Armstrong attended, our state representative, and I think it was good information for people who wanna start a business and have some measure of success. Also, if you are interested in being a big brother or a big sister to a child, feel free to call- feel free to call my office. I attended, uh, a session on that with the school system. So I have some information available. And I will not give the number out on the airwaves, but feel free if you are truly interested and we will make sure that you are connected with the right people. Ms. Goldman, have we covered everything?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.